Good afternoon, everyone. The afternoon-evening session of the City Council will come to order. Let us call the role to establish, re-establish a quorum, and then I'll sort of speak about where we're at.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Gueda.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier. Councilmember Jennings. And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Thank you.
Do you expect Councilmember Ashby shortly?
Right. She will be here this afternoon. So, members and members of the public, we apologize for beginning later than 5:00. We had an afternoon workshop that began at 2:00 on the crucial issue of housing and affordable housing in our city, and actually, in a very positive way, it went beyond the time allotted because of the public interest and the quality, I think, of the discussion among the panelists and the members of the council. And so, we recessed about 5:20, and we're now reconvening after a short break at 5:35. Let us do the Pledge of Allegiance again for your members of the public who are here. Mr. Voor, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Hanson, the presentations being...
We're postponing the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. So, let us begin, then, with the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, is there any, anything on the consent calendar that needs a little bit of, a little bit of work here?
Yes, I believe we want to pull item number nine. Councilmember Shenier recommended we do that, and I do have a few speakers...
To pull it and continue it, or to hear it tonight of the council? And so, we recessed about 5:20, and we're now reconvening after a short break at 5:35. Let us do the Pledge of Allegiance again for your members of the public who are here. Mr. Voor, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Hanson, the presentations being...
We're postponing the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. So, let us begin, then, with the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, is there any, anything on the consent calendar that needs a little bit of, a little bit of work here?
Yes, I believe we want to pull item number nine. Councilmember Shenier recommended we do that, and I do have a few speakers...
To pull it and continue it, or to hear it tonight?
Councilmember Shenier, did you want to pull item number nine for a separate vote?
Idea.
Thank you.
Okay, that is good. And so, on the remainder of the consent calendar...
I have three speakers.
Who are they?
I have Mac Worthy on item number one, and I have Daniel Palowski on item 10, and then, Daniel Palowski is on item 90 and 10.
Okay, and then I have an important comment I want to make on the controversial item 13. Okay? Go on, let me do that right now. On item 13, I just got to say, this is an agreement for the Simmons Community Center Programs and the Roberts Family Development Center Programs, and we cannot let this meeting go forward without acknowledging that Pastor Les Simmons just turned 40 years old. And to wish him a very, very happy birthday, one of the leaders in our community, and faith leaders, and community leaders, and...
He said he's feeling every year of it.
And, yeah, welcome to the other side. Wish you well. Happy birthday.
Shall we take our two speakers?
Yes, please.
So, Mac Worthy on item number one, and then Daniel Palowski on item number nine and 10.
Palowski. People, item number one, the general public got to get educated on what is the League of California Cities. League of California Cities is a lobbyist. Those are the people that put your money into a pot and bought rundown property. And the rundown property with the city on it, they don't pay tax. You can go to IRS. I've cleaned that building for 28 years. You can go to IRS, they're a nonprofit organization, and pull their whole file and study it, and you'll see how much money came in and who done the lobbying, and that money, your mayor was in legislation at the time that lobbying was going on. So, get you some people together that know something about accounting, and get to IRS on Watt Avenue. They gave it to me once, and I threw the stuff away. Because, see, the money was there. You need to go into those meetings. That is a public entity. You can attend that thing just as the city manager will be the delegate to there. Now, Hanson is the guy that go there and meet with them, but see where the switch go to the city manager. See what I'm saying? You got to go there and understand that. You got to understand what the government, the tricky within your local government. Don't worry about me and Trump, it wasn't D.C. You worry about here. Here's where your problem are. You are not keeping up with how nonprofit operates. Anything that this city own, it's a nonprofit organization, you can get on the freedom of information and sit down with your neighborhood and study it. Study nonprofit against profit and laws. Understand ownership, the power of ownership. In special, my people, understand that and get ahead, get ahead of the curve, because the next six years is going to be devastating. You're going to see a lot of things come down, you're going to see a lot of lizards in the swamp, because there's not going to be enough water to cover their back. So, you get ready to be independent in equality. That's what black folks got to look at over the next eight years. So, you can go on and do your own thing.
Worthy, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Daniel Patauski on items nine and 10. Right, and item number nine will be pulled for a separate vote.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager and City Clerk Daniel Patauski, I'm a 28-year resident in Sacramento. I've lived in Council District 5 for the last 14 years, and I'm familiar with this area because I'm just a few blocks south on Castro Way. And I understand the regulated parking, and I support it in front of residential areas and business areas, but I don't support it under the freeways. And the reason being, I know they did some studies, and the majority of the people that are parking under there are state workers, but there's also workers that work in the small businesses along Broadway. And if you regulate this area, you're not going to have a place to park. And the other issue, too, it's nice to have a spot that you could park, like some people park and actually go downtown, so we're inviting less vehicles into the downtown area, which I think is one of our purposes. But just the idea that small businesses, the employees, they're not going to have a place to park if they do these areas, so I'm asking that the areas underneath the freeway, and then there's the areas along the freeway here, like on this, this is right down by Third and Fifth, and the only business is across the street. It's a furniture store, and it has 28 parking spaces on site. And so, what I'm asking is that we don't regulate the parking along the freeway or under the freeway. Then do I talk on my next item?
You have 28 more seconds.
Oh, fine.
Which item on the calendar? Tent calendar?
That was item number nine.
Speaking on items nine and 10.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Give me another few seconds.
Just on item number 10, I just wanted to thank city staff and the Sacramento City and County Bicycle Advisory Committee for all the hard work they put into doing the master plan. It took a lot of time, they had a lot of city meetings. I'm an avid cyclist, like May is Bicycle Month, I log 12,000 miles, or 1,200 miles, excuse me, but I'm still on the road a lot. And I want to say, I moved here in 1990, and I've just seen incremental improvements. And the Protected Bike Pass now, they're great, because it's...
So, your time is complete.
All right.
Time is complete.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. So, you like the work we're doing?
Yes.
And the BikeMaster Plan?
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir.
No more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay, that's a consent calendar. Is there a motion? Again, but, I'm sorry, we do have members, sorry. Councilman Shenier.
Well, we pulled nine. Oh, we can do, we're doing consent now.
Okay, before there's a motion, Councilmember Shenier wants to wait until after the balance of the consent calendar to address...
It was pulled, so we'll hear it separately.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
And then I have a comment on one of the other.
Okay, so Vice Mayor first, on the remainder of this consent calendar, other than item nine.
Nine.
Nine, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to congratulate Les Simmons on his 40th. I think you've got at least another 40 in you, but with a young wife and a young family, you're certainly going to have to keep up with them, so congratulations. I wanted to ask the staff, though, about the BikeMaster Plan real quick. I just got back into town after being gone, and I couldn't download it because it's such a large file item. One of the things we've been working on for quite a while is a protected bike lane or cycle track on Riverside Boulevard through the little pocket area, and I think that staff may be working on that, but I just wanted to ask what the status of that is, since I can't download the item right now.
Vice Mayor Hanson, good evening. We met with your staff, and we were under the understanding to initiate a feasibility study, which is not included in the Bicycle Master Plan update, which is only a prioritization of the bikeways. There are no new facilities that were added, but we will be working with our engineering team to do that study.
Okay, so then, does, if we want to, feasibility comes back and it looks good, would we have to amend the BikeMaster Plan again to add that particular cycle track?
That is correct.
Is there any use in adding direction tonight to amend it, should the feasibility come back?
We would need to come back to the council to amend it anyway.
Okay.
So, regardless, we would come back to council.
Okay, okay. With that, I'll second the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Donlin.
The consent calendar is moved and seconded. We do have other members on the consent calendar, Councilmember Ashby?
Jennifer.
Yes.
Just a quick question. I read it, but I couldn't quite tell, because the map is too small, if the Strawberry Field Correction had been made.
There was, excuse me, Councilmember Ashby, there was no change to the map regarding Strawberry Field. It was as it was in 2016 when it was adopted.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the decision of the council is reflected on the...
Yes.
On the Bicycle Master Plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And there will be a larger version available once council adopts it. A more readable map will be online.
Yeah, it was really hard, even in the document, you couldn't really enlarge it, so that'd be great. Thanks.
Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just from, also from last time when we had it passed for publication, I wanted to again point out that there are many streets in District 6 where the bike, in the BikeMaster Plan, the bike plan is incongruent, or there's incomplete bike lanes. And when we discuss the next item later on today, we'll notice that those same locations are where we are identified as the high-traffic hazards. And I just want to make sure that we haven't lost that, because that's not in the BikeMaster Plan, but it is in Division Zero, and I wanted to make sure that that staff identified that so we can try to complete those areas moving forward.
Councilmember Gueda, we'll work with your office on that.
Okay, very good. The consent calendar, with the exception of item nine, has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Now, let's take up item nine, Councilmember Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. This, I think, is very quick. So, we've been working with the neighborhood around Curtis Park, and they have some concerns about going to two hours on a number of streets where the Department of Motor Vehicles folks currently park, with a concern that if we do that, they'll move more into the neighborhood on their parking. So, what we'd like to do is, on 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 26th Streets, make that, you want to do eight-hour or 10-hour, Mr. Hanson?
Councilmember Shenier, we're just specifying between W and X, I believe, and one of the suggestions I would make, and if parking staff says it's feasible, set it to an either eight- or 10-hour timeframe, so that if we get long-term parkers, or abandoned vehicles, or other things, we can appropriately deal with that.
I would make a motion, leave it up to your discretion to go eight-hours or 10-hours, whatever you think works best. And with that, I'll move the item, with that amendment.
Moved and seconded, okay. On item nine, no public testimony. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained. All right, before we get to item 15, you might note from your agenda that item 14 has been pulled, but I think it's worth noting why, because it's a very important and significant, significant issue. As, as you all know, or may know, our, the Laborers, Local 185, had filed an appeal from the Planning Commission decision to approve the Natomas Crossing Quadrant and Office, maybe better known, at least around city hall circles, as a place where we hope to attract the very first West Coast corporate headquarters for Sacramento in the Centene Corporation, 5,000-plus jobs. Thanks to the intervention of Councilmember Ashby and her leadership, and I got a little involved, but really her, this item was, let's just say, in a very effective way, negotiated. And as a result, the Laborers and the Heinz Company reached an agreement and a settlement, and the appeal is, been withdrawn. And so, the project moves forward with the anticipation, knock, knock wood, that in the next weeks, we're going to have a very special groundbreaking to celebrate what will be a very big day for Sacramento. So, I want to thank Angelique for stepping up big time, not only on behalf of her district, but on behalf of the city in ensuring that a most important and worthy project was not delayed, and it all worked out. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. It is a really big deal to get across this hurdle, and I want to thank you and your staff, particularly Scott White from your team, who put a lot of energy and effort into this also, herding cats, to get people together. But I think it's important to note, because there were a number of people when this appeal came through that were concerned and reached out, not just in my district, but across the city, because 5,000 high-wage jobs doesn't come around every day in any city. And so, that's a big deal for us, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for engaging in the discussions that created a facilitated opportunity, by way of the mayor's office and myself, to give these two entities an opportunity to work out their concerns. And as a result, the project moves forward, and we hope to see construction start in early October, which is fantastic for all of us. We need more houses, though.
Back to the housing workshop.
Back to the housing.
Okay, thank you very much. So, no action on item 14, which is a good thing. Let's now move to item 15.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the City Council. I am Sean DeCoursey, Associate Preservation Planner with the Community Development Department. This item is the Mills Act, which is a California state law, which allows local governments to enter into agreements with owners of historic properties. Property owners agree to maintain, and in some cases, restore their historic properties. And in exchange, tax assessors will evaluate those properties using a method that typically, but not always, results in a 20% to 30% property reduction for the property owner. With the goal of restarting this important program, staff has worked with local stakeholders to prepare an ordinance amendment, a contract limit, and fees that will help simplify and streamline the application and inspection process for this program. This item comes to you with unanimous support from motions of approval from the Law and Legislation Committee, the Planning and Design Commission, and the Preservation Commission. Staff has received one letter of support from Preservation Sacramento. Staff recommends the City Council pass a motion adopting an ordinance amending Section 17604-720 of the Sacramento City Code relating to Mills Act contracts, adopting a resolution setting the number of Mills Act contracts the city may enter into a calendar year at 12, and adopting a resolution establishing fees to administer the program. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I do have one speaker on this item?
Yes.
Mr. Scott Ford.
Mr. Ford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Scott Ford with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, and I am here to speak in support of the Mills Act program. The Mills Act is one of the few financial incentives available to owners of qualified historic properties, and is a critical tool to encourage private investment in these buildings while ensuring that they are restored and maintained. Sacramento is one of the only major cities in California without an active Mills Act program, and the implementation of the program has been a goal of the city since the year 2000. Restoration raises property values, helps attract new tenants, and creates an opportunity for increased sales tax revenue. The restoration of existing structures is an efficient avenue to increase housing stock, often in a more sustainable and cost-effective manner than new construction. The Mills Act serves as a stimulus for private investment in our city's historic treasures, and will help alleviate blight and build value. Downtown Partnership urges the council to support this act, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford. All right, that's the public testimony. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The restoration of this program was a request that I made during the budget season, I think, last year. I want to thank Carson Anderson and the planning staff. Sean, thank you for your presentation, for working through all the projects on their lap and getting to this. It's very important to, certainly, my constituents, but to the historic properties that have trouble getting reused because of the significant costs that entail under the California Building Code in bringing those properties back into useful life. So, this is really important. It's a limited program by its nature, but a very, very important program. So, I'd like to move to open and close the public hearing and approve the item, and my gratitude to you and the staff.
Yes, there's a second, and Councilmember Harris is up.
So, I'd like to thank our Vice Mayor for bringing this forward. I think it's a tool that people who have historic buildings can use to their advantage, and will probably keep some of our beautiful old buildings intact moving forward. So, I'm happy to second the motion, and off we go.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded, commented upon, and digested. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained. The measure passes. Thank you very much. We cannot, under the rules and law, take up item 16 until 6:00.
So, let's take 17.
So, let's take item 17.
It was noticed for 6:00 p.m., and so, it's, we have three minutes. We can't, we can't even talk about it.
We can't even talk about it? You can't even think about it until 6:00. So, let's, let's move to item 17.
We'd like you to think about nothing but traffic safety for the next 10 or 15 minutes.
Good, okay.
So, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Council. I'm Ryan Moore, your City Traffic Engineer with your Department of Public Works. Very excited to be here tonight to introduce the Vision Zero Action Plan. So, this is the plan that represents the city's renewed focus on traffic safety. Vision Zero, as most of you already know, is a paradigm that looks at fatalities and serious injuries in the right-of-way, not as accidents, but by, as preventable incidents that we have the ability, control, and responsibility to address. So, with your direction, the city staff has created a priority to establish the elimination of traffic fatalities and serious injuries by the year 2027. That's an extremely ambitious goal, one that the Vision Zero program will tackle through a robust, data-driven process, which will establish clear strategies for implementation. So, our staff works extensively in all of your council districts, and one thing we can tell you, citywide, the things that influence fatalities and serious injuries through traffic collisions are fairly uniform. You see a lot of the same things happening around the whole city, regardless of demographic, type of neighborhood, type of street. They're also very complex. So, the Vision Zero program will address these through a multidisciplinary approach. We need to rethink the way we design our roadways. We need to reevaluate the way we enforce traffic laws. We need to rethink our policies here at City Hall, and we need to look for behavioral changes through education to our residents and businesses throughout the city. So, for me, I'm very excited. This is a great moment in history for us. For so long, traffic engineering and mobility has really been driven by vehicle throughput, how many vehicles you can put through a roadway. And the Vision Zero is really a seismic shift that you're seeing, not just in the city, but throughout the nation and even the world. It's a focus on traffic safety, and it's a hugely important thing, so we're very happy to be embracing it here in Sacramento. And with that, I'd like to introduce the city's program manager for the Vision Zero program, who has done an amazing job of putting together a Vision Zero program that we are all extremely proud of, and not only the action plan that we're hearing tonight, but she's actually already working on the implementation plan. It's just a fabulous job, we're extremely proud of. So, Jennifer, would you like to come up and present that?
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present to you our Vision Zero Action Plan. I'm sure many of you know, but just to reiterate, why are we doing this? We're looking at our collisions, and are killed or severely injured. This is an incredibly important topic. The number of KSIs or killed or severely injured has increased by 6% over the years between 2009 and 2015, and this is incredibly significant. While the number of KSIs for those involved in driving have decreased, those for walking and biking have increased significantly. So, this is something that's incredibly important to the city. It's also incredibly important, and the importance of this, is that we've actually had more traffic fatalities than we've had homicides in the city for the last two years, for 2016 and for 2017. That's a big number, that's a big statistic to think about, how many people are dying related to traffic fatalities on our streets. I checked in with the police department earlier today, and again, we are on track for really high numbers for 2018. It's a data-driven approach, as Ryan had mentioned, and one of the first things we did was look at our high-injury network, which is the streets that have the highest numbers of severe injuries and fatalities. These comprise just 14% of the city's streets, which is significant, and unsurprisingly, they're in our high-speed, higher-volume roadways. One of our major profiles that we found was often happening is speed, speed-related incidences. We are actually second worst in California for traffic-related fatalities related to speed, for cities of our size, for cities over 250,000. Again, thinking about that, we are not anywhere close to being the second-largest city in California, but we are second worst for traffic-related, related to speed, which is something that we can control. We're also second worst in California for alcohol-involved traffic fatalities. 25% of all of our killed and severely injured are related to alcohol-impaired driving. When we looked at the data, we pulled out 10 profiles to better understand what is the story and what is going on. You can see them here, but generally, what we have is speed-impaired driving in commercial areas and in our higher-speed, higher-volume roadways. We did look at demographics, and while most demographic groups did not come up as overly represented, our senior citizens did, for over 60 years old. This is more about traffic. You often see me here talking to you about traffic issues in my department, talking about traffic issues, but it's really about the quality of life in Sacramento, and what makes Sacramento a fabulous place to be, and this is why it's so important to address. So, the action plan includes over 40 actions that are based in national studies on really how to change both engineering, education, and enforcement, because these are the three things we need to do together in order to improve traffic safety. These are, some of the examples are short-term items, update our street standards so that they reflect best practices, develop designs for our top-five corridors, which are our worst corridors in the city, prioritize projects on the high-injury network, support automated speed enforcement. This is something that's been incredibly proven to work in other states. It's not legal for use in California. This is something that we're asking you to, your support for. Increase the number of traffic safety enforcement officers. We can't have them proven by engineering and education alone. We want to work closely with our police department. Then launch a PSA campaign about speeding and impaired driving. So, what have we been doing? I'm sure a lot of you know we've actually started a lot of the work on this. We've launched our "Safety is Homegrown" campaign. You might have seen on buses, on billboards, on lawn signs around the city, our campaign, funded through OTS. We applied for an H sub grant application, which we took to you a couple of weeks ago. We're going to be moving forward with that. Working with a Caltrans grant to look at our systemic issues in the city. We've kicked off our top-five corridor study, which is the study of the five worst corridors in the city for traffic fatalities, and we'll be coming to you and your districts on that in the fall. And then we've launched a school-area study under Vision Zero, because school safety is incredibly important, and we'll be working with you on that as well. The recommendation is that you pass a resolution adopting the 2018 Vision Zero Action Plan as the city's guide to address traffic safety. Happy to answer any questions.
We have half-three speakers. Let's hear the public testimony.
I have three speakers on this item. Rose Cabral, Jim Brown, and then Kiran Kumar. Following Ms. Cabral is Jim Brown, and then Kiran Kumar.
Hello, I'm Rose Cabral, and I'm here today because my dad was one of those, is going to be one of those dots on a future map. He was killed in April.
Sorry.
Thank you. So, I commend the city council for adopting this vision last year, and although it's a constant reminder of my dad's death, I've been glad to see the yard signs popping up everywhere. But after reading the report, I want to highlight three things that I think are really important in their report, that we should, that I would like to focus on. The importance of street design. People are using our streets how they were designed, and they were designed a long time ago, before our city grew and got really large. So, my dad was killed on 65th Street. However, less than a quarter-mile away, it becomes the 65th Expressway, and so you go from a street to an expressway, and then there's that Hiram Johnson High School right there, too. Number two, it's difficult to change someone's behavior. For example, in restrooms, we want to recycle paper towels, right? So, you put the recycle bin, and people don't use it. And you're like, "Why aren't you using it?" And you say, "Oh, people want to put the recycle bin." If you move it next to the door, the exit door, then people start using it, because it's in the way, and that's where they're going to put the paper towel. So, similarly, how are our streets designed? Are they designed to drive fast, or do we need to narrow them to drive slowly? So, I think that the design of our streets needs to be changed so that people will have to drive in a different way. And although the map shows a concentration of fatalities in the city core area, I'd also like to highlight our areas along Stockton Boulevard was a major one on every map that was in the report, and then, of course, 65th Street. And these are in our local income areas where people rely solely on public transportation to get to and from their areas.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. Your time is complete.
And I also want to highlight Broadway, because we've had three fatalities in the past four months on Broadway, so that won't be in the report.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Jim Brown. I apologize.
Thank you for testifying. If you have more, please call us or just put it in an email. We'll hear the rest of it, okay? And we're really sorry for the tragedy that you've suffered, and you come here to make sure that your dad's death was not in vain, and that other people are, that you don't have, other people don't have to go through what you're going through, and that means a lot, okay?
End of my speech. You said it.
Well, I just said it. Okay, my two minutes. It's all right. Okay. Thank you.
Jim Brown, and then Kiran Kumar.
Thank you, Rose, for your comments. I'm Jim Brown with Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. SABHA advocates for community-wide benefits that come from enabling more people to travel by bike, including better air quality, reduced traffic congestion, and more livable neighborhoods. Improving roadway safety is the key to all of these benefits. I represented SABHA on the city's Vision Zero Task Force, and I want to commend Jennifer and also Hector Barone, as well as Vice Mayor Steve Hansen and his staff, for their hard work and leadership on this effort. It's been very important. At its heart, Vision Zero is an equity initiative that addresses the neighborhoods and populations that bear the disproportionate burden of unsafe streets. For example, law enforcement collision data show us that half of all fatal bike collisions in Sacramento County occur south of Broadway and west of Power and Road. These are mostly the first-string post-war suburban neighborhoods that were designed for cars. These are also neighborhoods where many residents especially need reliable options for transportation and alternatives to driving. By using collision data to show us where and how to fix the most hazardous streets in these neighborhoods, the Vision Zero program won't simply enable more people to walk-bike or use public transit safely. It's also what will enable them to patronize local businesses, get to and from work and school, and access essential services. So, the quality of life for these neighborhoods and their residents depends on making the streets safe. The Vision Zero Action Plan shows us the way to do that, and I urge the council to adopt the resolution to enact it. Next, we'll need resources. Historically, the city relies on competitive state and federal grants to fund nearly all street improvements, especially those related to biking and walking. Given the uncertainty and constraints that come with all those funding sources, the city must find and allocate locally-controlled funds that can, that can be used to responsibly and creatively fix these urgent safety needs. Again, big thanks to the city staff, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city on this effort. Thank you.
But thank you very much for your advocacy.
And our final speaker is Kiran Kumar.
Mr. Kumar?
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you, Rose, for your brave testimony today. My name is Kiran Kumar. I'm the Executive Director of WALK Sacramento. WALK Sacramento is a community-based, active transportation planning and advocacy organization. We work throughout the region to, striving to create safer, healthier, and more sustainable communities. A large part of accomplishing that mission over the last several years has been advocacy for and participation in the city's Vision Zero process. As a member of the city's task force, we helped to come up with the 2027 goal and many of the action items in that plan. I'd like to specifically thank the leadership of Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, Ryan Moore, and Hector Barone on staff, as well as our elected partners, Steve Hansen and Eric Garofi, for your leadership. Vision Zero is extremely important, because a disproportionate number of fatal collisions happen in underserved areas. As such, this plan and subsequent steps to implement it will have the greatest benefits in areas where people most rely on walking and biking for daily travel, commercial corridors like Franklin Boulevard, Mack Road, and Del Paso Heights, neighborhood streets like 65th Avenue, Marysville Boulevard, and communities like Oak Park, Valley High, Strawberry Manor, and so many others. Vision Zero is also valuable, because it represents a truly data-driven process. It ensures that our actions are meaningful, and our efforts and money are not wasted on ineffective things like pedestrian-crossing stings that only serve to victim blame the most vulnerable users of our streets. Instead, Vision Zero represents a commitment to systematically improving our most dangerous roadways, balanced with education and enforcement. And while traffic safety is laudable, an incredibly important goal on its own, the value of Vision Zero is so much more. Creating safer streets means that more people are walking, biking, and taking transit. But prioritizing safety in a plan and only going after competitive grants is not enough for the city to reach its ambitious goals of zero-traffic fatalities. If the city truly means to prioritize traffic safety, we, the city and its residents, must continue to identify...
Thank you, Mr. Kumar. Your time is complete.
...and allocate funding to make this plan a reality. Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We do have members of the council up on this important item. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. In 2016, our former Public Works Director, Jerry Way, and I were talking about some of these challenges, and we've been working on Grid 3.0 and some of the other issues with traffic fatalities. As we've learned, there are no accidents, but it's road design, culture, and behavior that lead to these staggering numbers, not only the homicides, but the injuries. And that's when we first raised the idea of implementing Vision Zero here, and it's our forward-thinking Public Works Department that has certainly taken the bull by the horns here to reshape the culture of the department. And in January of last year, Mayor, you had just joined us up here at the dais, we adopted Vision Zero as our city's policy, and staff has spent the last year and a half developing this plan, and I think this plan is really phenomenal for a variety of reasons. One, I saw a billboard today, as I was coming in from Tahoe in Citrus Heights, using our campaign. I think that Clear Channel, who's one of our partners, had put it up on one of their electronic billboards as a PSA. And what the city, I raise that, because what the city does on this will influence other jurisdictions nearby to make the roads safer. In our region, we have many streets that are dangerous by design, and clearly, the high-injury network shows the progress that needs to be made in our city, and it's every part of the city. Every district has roads that we know people are afraid to walk across, to bike on, and sometimes even to drive. And this is an opportunity to save lives, to prevent injuries, but also to teach people how to use these public resources, our streets, our sidewalks, better and safer. And I also just want to thank you, Jennifer, Ryan, Hector, the whole team, for being willing to rethink how we operate our streets, whether it's using intelligent transportation systems, whether it's bike lanes or cycle tracks or better pedestrian markings. There's still a lot to do, and you highlighted a few of those things, but the fact that SABHA and WALK Sacramento are here, fully in support of this plan, says that it is the right direction to show our city that people's lives can be saved, and particularly, that we can change this, these injuries. So, I know that we want to support state legislation for automated speed enforcement. I'm really excited that that's part of this plan. Working on some of the 85th percentile requirements is a big deal as well. Traffic enforcement, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, how we get more of our officers doing traffic enforcement, but I know, given the restaffing of the department, the reconstitution of the motor unit is something that's just finally happened in the last six months to a year, but we really only have one, I believe, or five? We have about five traffic officers. I only ever see one show up to community meetings, but I have requests all the time, probably like the rest of the members. We have the signs up that say "stop," that say what the appropriate speed is, or markings on the ground to show where pedestrians are supposed to be, but vehicles, and bikes sometimes, sometimes pedestrians, don't like to necessarily follow the signs and the rules, because there's no consequence. But when somebody loses their life or seriously injured, that is a horrible consequence that the people involved will live with, especially those who've been seriously injured. So, I really think that getting traffic enforcement back to a modicum of reliability is really important. This 10% number, I assume, is a goal, but I think it's one we should strive for. And then, finally, Ryan, we've talked about this a lot, updating our pedestrian-crossing guidelines, really making sure that we have a modern, forward-thinking set of values related to how we support people getting out of their cars and using our sidewalks or putting in sidewalks so they can use sidewalks and bike lanes, so that whether it's a complete street and can really support that active world, I think that those are, that's the future of our city. And, Rose, I'm really sorry about your father's loss, and I hope that we can save other lives in the future, because we now know how bad it is. So, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Moved in second by Councilmember Gedda. Moved by Councilmember Vice Mayor Hansen. Councilmember Gedda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Rose, again, my condolences, and I want to thank you for your bravery and courage for being here today. You know, the, this issue, I mean, from the first day I got on the council, was a high-priority issue, because the number of fatalities that we've had, and I think within a period of six months, we had a fatality on Howe Avenue by Campus Commons, we had a fatality on Florin Perkins, and we had a fatality on 65th Expressway, and then, as recently as this year, we had, within a period of a few weeks, on Broadway, a few blocks apart. You know, we had the fatality with Rose's dad on Broadway and 65th, and then another elderly man who lived across, right next, adjacent to the DMV, was struck at 50th Third and Broadway. And so, it's no surprise, when we look at the, at the data here, that there's an identifier that a lot of our seniors are at risk in this. But it's not just them. I remember shortly before I got on the council, you know, and Rose has been active with both our Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association and Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association, but we had a young girl walking to school over by Mark Twain and West Campus, who was struck on Fruit Ridge and 58th, a few blocks from my house. And I just think about, you know, my son's nine months. I grew up growing, riding my bike to school. It was, you know, out in the country, but it was three miles long, and I don't know if I could even think about, in the condition of our roads, having my son go three blocks on his own, knowing some of this information. And I, and I think, I think that if kids have to grow up in that environment today, I think we're, we're missing something in our city planning, because I just enjoy that, that freedom, that ability. Not only that, but just the type of, the healthy activity that we want people to do, want people to be active and walking and riding their bikes and changing our lifestyle. You know, everything we're doing on planning and whatnot, but one of the key things that I think that we, we have to change is the safety of our roadways for not just cyclists and pedestrians, but also for drivers, you know? You know, the, this mentality and road rage and everything that we see, I mean, we saw the fatality that happened on the freeway recently. Everything we're doing here today, we can re-engineer the streets, we can do more traffic enforcement, but I don't think if we don't change our culture of what we think about our roadways and the responsibility, we're not going to make a change. And, and I think that is, that's on all of us, on everyone, to try to make that change. So, I'm proud to second this here. I made the point earlier on the BikeMaster plan. When I look at this item, I think it should be with the BikeMaster plan together, looking at those, because when I look at those maps on the BikeMaster plan, and at least specifically for my district, I overlay the areas that are high knee, very low-vehicle ownership and high bicycle usage. And then, when I overlay them with the income levels and the, some of the health factors, they overlay each other often. And the areas where I see cyclists all the time, and there are people just getting to work, not because, maybe I enjoy riding a bike, maybe they do it because they like it, too, but most of them is because they don't have vehicles, because of income. It's on Stockton Boulevard, and Stockton and Fruit Ridge is one of the most dangerous intersections in our city. The other one is on Howe Avenue and Fair Oaks, and that's another one, and both of them in my council district, and it's something critical we have to start looking at changing. I appreciate all the staff's work as part of this plan, that we're going after more grants. Thank you, Councilmember Shanir, and your work at Secog to go after both, not only the Franklin Boulevard area, but also Stockton Boulevard Complete Streets. These are, as Rose said, these were old highways. They were old Highway 99 that was designed as a highway, and now they're commuter areas, and there were people, we built around them, and so it's dangerous. I like this idea of, and some of these recommendations here about increased traffic enforcement, particularly also, I mean, and I, and I'm now a new cyclist, I also have to say that our cyclist needs to follow the rules of the road, too. I don't know how many times I see cyclists that are going contrary to traffic or making some very dangerous cut-throughs through a busy, you know, intersection. Pedestrians, the same thing. We have to get back to old school, you know? Look both ways before you cross, man. I mean, I think those are the same things. We have to make sure that it goes both ways. If I understand, the senior that had the fatality and on Broadway and 53rd, their speed was not a factor, but he was on a crosswalk, and there was, there was a fallen sense of security. You know, Ryan, I think you can correct me in that, but I think that was the situation there. So, it's an equal, I think this is, this Vision Zero piece is a bigger conversation about how we make our roadway safer. Lastly, it's about commitment to funding infrastructure, and on March 18th, a grandmother on Lemon Hill in Logan, right by the Georgetown Center, was walking with her granddaughter, and she was struck in the morning by a vehicle, and the person ran away. It was a hit-and-run. The grandmother died, and the granddaughter fortunately only had a couple of bruises and scrapes. But that's another area where, for the longest time, we've needed lights in an intersection. That's been a dangerous turning area, and it's the, and on both Elder Creek and Lemon Hill, it's the access point to one of our largest community centers. You know, we cannot wait anymore on making sure that these infrastructure projects get moving forward, and I want to thank this council for voting on the CBDG grant to get the design work done, but now we got to build it. Now, we got to build it. So, that was a long talking point, but I just, I've seen too many fatalities and I've gotten too many calls from our police captain to say that this is something that we have to move forward, but it's not about protecting cyclists, it's not about pedestrians, it's about protecting everyone, drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians. With that, Mr. Mayor, I urge an a vote.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I remember, Steve, when we first started talking...
So I remember, Steve, when we first started talking about this, and it was kind of a new concept, and most of this council wasn't here because it was a while back. And I remember having a conversation with you, and we were talking about how awesome it would be to actually have an action plan for a Vision Zero. And we both wanted this so bad. And I saw, like, as little iterations come on, and I think when Hector took over from Jerry Way, I'm pretty sure Jerry whispered in his ear, "See if you can get Vision Zero across the finish line." And then hiring Jennifer, giving Ryan the authority, has moved us ever, ever closer to this goal, to where we're now fully implementing some of these procedures. And I was really proud to come back from Portland and show Jennifer this sign, Portland, Oregon's Vision Zero signs. And she said to me, "We just made ours. They hadn't gone out yet. We had just made them." And I remember feeling really proud that we were out in front on that issue. Rose, I'm sure the last thing you wanted to do today was receive condolences from every member of this council, but I couldn't help but think how amazing you are to stand there and fight for policy changes that, had they been in place sooner, might have saved your dad. And I'm so sorry, but I'm also really grateful to you for finding the courage to come help us do better. We need you. We need people like you who behave like you and participate because it makes us better. And I think this is also about a change of culture, a change of behavior. Eric and Steve are right, it's in every district. I have the newest district, and I have streets that are eight lanes wide in some places. They're no good at all for trying to cross. And unfortunately, some of them lead to the high school. So you got to figure out, kids are darting across there, and I've had my share of fatalities, too. You all know about one very high-profile one on El Centro last year that led to some quick action from Supervisor Serna and myself. We completely redid a road in about eight months because it was just an awful situation, a road that, like many in our areas, especially Jay's and Eric's and mine, weaves in and out of the city and the county. And the city part looks one way, and the county part looks another, and you lose a sidewalk or you lose a, you know, you lose a bike lane. And that's hard for people to traverse. They don't care who's responsible for that road, the city or the county. They expect to be safe and have a safe condition as they travel it. So I just want to say that from a council member perspective, and in this one, I really wear my mom hat. I think this is one of the most important things we're doing. It's wonky and nerdy, and it's a lot of policy, but it's just one of those things that if we can get it right, we'll save so many people. And we can really change how people behave in Sacramento. Last thought on this for me is that scary days in a mom's life, the day you become a mom, the day you drop your kid off at kindergarten for the first time and leave him with somebody else, and the day they get their driver's license. Because they drive out of that driveway, and you don't have any control over everyone they're going to encounter and what's going to happen. You're afraid they're going to hurt somebody else, afraid someone's going to hurt them. Takes a long time to get past that fear, and then, of course, they go to college and scare you again. But I think anything we can do as a city to protect pedestrians, bikers, and drivers is brilliant. And so Jennifer, Ryan, and especially Hector under your leadership, and really Howard Chan for that matter, too, thank you very, very much for letting us move this forward.
Thank you. Councilman Carr.
Yes, Jennifer, just a quick question for you. On the traffic enforcement portion, you said more officers. Is there another way that's less manpower-intensive to control speed and lane changes as opposed to hiring additional police officers?
Councilmember Carr, yes, that's the automated speed enforcement. However, that's not legal in California at the moment. There is a legislative effort to allow automated speed enforcement at the state level, but it has not moved forward. It's one of the requests is that this be added to the platform, your legislative platform, to help and support move that forward. At this time, though, the only way to address that is through enforcement.
So, can I just add, is the bill pending currently? Is it moving? Is it, maybe we can weigh in?
At this time, I believe it's pending. It hasn't moved forward.
Is this on our legislative agenda, our guidance to our legislators to support this?
I don't know that it is. The first thing is to find out exactly whether it's still alive in the legislative session. If it is, maybe we can make a, you know, push here in the last two and a half weeks of the session, you know, an extra push.
Sometimes it comes back in the next session.
Sometimes it does, but I just would hate to miss the moment now if it's still...
Oh, yeah, we want to get on it.
What's that?
We'd like to get on it.
Yeah, right. I just don't know where the bill is at. We'll find out. Okay, let's find out. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Larry.
That was it.
Okay. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in this regard, I'd say the revamping of the intersection at Carlson between H and J is a really good example of what we can achieve by engineering. So at that particular intersection, one of the most difficult in the city, we had two bike fatalities and also another vehicle fatality in a very short period of time. Three people died in three years. And we knew in River Park was time to take action. We'd been talking about it for years. Steve Cohen got a little bit done with a stoplight, but our Public Works Department really took the bull by the horns and designed something pretty avant-garde with protected bike lanes and green striping and the first bicycle stoplight in the city. So it was really moving in the right direction. I can tell you that I got a lot of complaints from motorists because it was slowing them down, and they didn't like it. And we weathered that storm, we made a few tweaks to the intersection, made it a little bit more functional. But in the end, now what I'm getting is a lot of thank yous because people feel safe going to Sacramento State, from Esack, from River Park. So we can do this. Vision Zero is real, and we can stem the flow of fatalities in the city. So I just want to say that this is a good plan, and as much as we can implement, we should certainly fund because it will save lives. And I thank our Public Works Department a lot. You do good work.
Excellent. Councilman Gedda, again?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, AB 342 by David Chu was stalled in the first house of the second year session for last year. So, and, but I wouldn't be surprised, that was the Chu Weiner Bell and Chu Bill, Chu with an I and Chu without the I. And, but if we could support it, that would be good. The other thing I wanted to bring up that I forgot to mention is if we could start working and moving the neighborhood associations and working with the neighborhood associations, there's a letter here by the College of Glen Neighborhood Association. Ms. Deglow couldn't be here to read it today, but it's for all the members and staff. And then also, I know, I want to thank Walk Sacramento and Saba because they worked with the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association to do a Broadway walk audit and identified some of those areas. So whatever we can do to move and look at some of those efforts that the neighborhoods have worked on to try to move those action items, any immediate things that we can do would be greatly appreciated. I know the issue of pedestrian crossings on Broadway has been a big issue. And with that, I just want to thank again the staff, Jennifer, Ryan, you guys have been out on, at the corner of these intersections right after people have, like, had accidents. I know we were there when the motorcyclists, right after the motorcyclists had issues on 14th Avenue. And I appreciate your guys' ability to be there late at night over at the burger joint, you know, talking to residents. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I just want to add my thank you as well, Ryan and Jennifer, and Hector and your entire team. This is progressive policy, and my colleagues who helped lead this effort as well, with this effort over several years. I guess, one question about technology. All the energy and interest that we are generating in this city around autonomous vehicles, is technology part of the answer here, too, to improve pedestrian safety?
Absolutely. It's a huge part of it. I mean, we've been so dependent on building our way out of problems for generations. The technology available to us through intelligent transportation systems is going to put a facelift on Sacramento's mobility grid. Right now, we have our downtown controller project, which will come out in 2019, which will replace the controller, which is the computer that operates the signal, at every intersection, signal intersection in the central city. It allows a huge ability to coordinate and get them to function more as an ecosystem.
Okay. It sounds from what Councilmember Gedda reported just a moment ago that the state effort to authorize automated speed enforcement is not speeding along, so to speak, and that, you know, it may be controversial over there, which I understand. So it sort of begs the question for me, if a technology solution is not immediately forthcoming, I'd at least like to know, and maybe this is for Public Works, the city manager to work with the police chief here, to sort of cost out for us what it would take to increase in an effective way our traffic enforcement unit and officers. We talk a lot about community policing and our desires and our ambitions, and if we started with traffic enforcement, which is a core neighborhood issue here, when you look at that, you know, statistic that 44% of the fatal crashes and half of the pedestrian KSI crashes occur in the city's disadvantaged communities, which account for only 25% of the roadway network. I'd like to at least know, for possible future consideration, what kind of an investment it would take in order to increase the number of traffic safety officers or personnel in our city, please. Can we get that? Working with the chief?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had a chance to text the police department, and we do have as part of our staffing plan to bring a traffic unit back from when we're going through the downturn. It's one sergeant and four officers. We currently have that staffing now, so we want to double it.
Okay, so, and that's authorized in the budget currently?
It's part of our staffing plan, correct. Part of the vacancies that we're trying to fill.
Okay, so it's within existing budget. That's progress. But my request remains the same because I don't know, does two cover the city? And all of the, you know, corridors that we've been discussing here tonight? I'm just asking. It's two different shifts, right? They don't work 24-hour days. I'm just asking. I'd just like to know what it would take, not to, you know, not the dream budget, but just to take it, you know, in a way that it was clear to our city's residents that enforcing the traffic laws was even a higher priority. I'd love to know what it would take to do even more. Okay? Okay, thank you. All right, there is a great work. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That's excellent. Thank you. Not a report to sit on a dusty shelf, for sure. Good work. Okay, let's now, the hour having gone past six o'clock, let's now go back to item 16. Item 16, who's presenting on this one?
I'll present.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Mary Jean Rodriguez with your finance department. This is the public hearing on the formation of a bonded CFT, the City of Sacramento Railyards Community Facilities District, 2018-01. The developer of the rail yards project has asked the city to form a CFT on their property to permit the issuance of tax-exempt bonds and reimbursement to the developer for public infrastructure. The proposed district will be formed in compliance with the Miller Ruth Community Facilities District Act of 1982. The public hearing tonight is to provide the opportunity for any interested person, including all taxpayers, property owners, and registered voters within the CFT, to protest any aspect of the proposed district. Staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, and on conclusion and in the absence of a majority protest, adopt the three resolutions in your pocket to form the district. Authorize the issuance of bonds and call a special election. I'm not available to answer any of them.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Good presentation. Thank you. Told us all we, you know, just the facts, as they say. Is there a, any public testimony on this?
There's none.
There's not? I have Councilmember Harris up. Here we go. Your district, sir.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. As you know, the rail yards project is rather essential to the moving forward of Sacramento, and the infrastructure burden is enormous, and this Community Facilities District will help the developer to overcome some of the challenges so that we can move forward with a brand-new hospital, and hopefully MLS will come and a lot of housing. So this is an important piece of the puzzle. I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move forward the Rail Yards Community Facilities District.
Very good. It's been moved by the council member for the Rail Yards District, Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Warren. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. We do have one more item here, and that is item 18.
Mayor Steinberg and council members, my name is Brad Wasson, Revenue Manager with the Finance Department. This evening, I'm bringing you some recommendations to improve the enforcement and compliance with the short-term rental program. Councilmember Harris asked the city manager to provide some recommendations to improve the enforcement and compliance for short-term rental operators in Sacramento. On June 12th, the Law and Legislation Committee approved this draft ordinance and asked staff to bring it before the full council. It seems that the proximity of the applicant of the property where this rental is, the proximity of the applicant increases the amount of oversight on the guests and lessens the impact on the surrounding neighbors. Consequently, staff is recommending allowing only one permit per parcel if the applicant does not reside in the city, limiting the total number of guests to six per parcel unless the applicant resides at the property. Also clarifying that permits cannot advertise for more guests than their permit allows. In addition to these changes, we are recommending that the code clarify that short-term rental permits do not supersede homeowner association's CCNRs. With this challenging enforcement situation, we have issued an RFP for consultant services to help with identification and compliance with this code. We've received five responses to the RFP and are currently in contract finalization with staff's recommended vendor. This contract is scheduled to come to city council on September 25th. Airbnb has done a great job collecting the city's TOT. They have been helpful pushing out permitting information to their hosts. They hosted a meeting last June for their Sacramento clients where we reviewed permitting requirements. This is in the right direction. However, they do not require their hosts obtain our permit before advertising on their platform. Some larger cities have been able to get Airbnb to agree to this. Staff has not been successful getting Airbnb to move in this direction. Consequently, I'm asking the council to approve the draft code changes, which will help with compliance and enforcement of short-term rentals. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions along with Carl Simpson from Code Enforcement and Audreel Anderson from the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Gedda.
If I could, I think Mr. Harris was punched up first here.
Okay.
And I'd actually like to yield my time to him since this was his...
The gentleman from...
The gentleman from the right side.
From Tahoe Park yields his time to the gentleman from River Park.
I haven't been called a gentleman in a while. So Brad, I'd like to thank you for your work on this. As you all know, we've struggled a little bit with our short-term rental ordinance. When we first put it out there, we were trying to encourage a nascent industry. There's obviously a lot of appetite for short-term rentals worldwide, and we didn't want to exclude that use from our city. However, we have run into a few snags, and it is exactly right that we need to work with Airbnb, but the other platforms as well. You know, we can't just single them out. It's very important that they require a permit number to be on their advertisements, and that way we will have a modicum of control that we will never have without it. That being said, these are good additions to our ordinance. They solve several of our problems. In my district, I have one very difficult operator, and we haven't had the tools to actually enforce in this particular property. And these ordinance changes will give us a lot more to work with in terms of getting to a satisfactory result. There's things about it I don't like, but, you know, it's give and take when you're building an ordinance, and sometimes... building an ordinance, and sometimes you don't get it quite perfect. I will continue to work with Airbnb to see where we can get in terms of convincing them that to be a good player in this city, they do only what they've agreed to do in other cities, which is to require a permit number, and in that way, we can get the people who are not in compliance, which are by far, the majority of the operators are operating without a permit. We know this already. The RFP that you've put out for a web scraper will definitely help us get that under control, but the real control will be when the platform operators comply with our desire to have permit numbers on their advertisements. So we'll keep pressing in that direction. That being said, I'd like to move this item.
Moved and seconded, we have council member Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let me address the second part of what I want to talk about first, which are the platform operators. What leverage do we have to compel compliance with identifying the permit numbers on their platforms?
Unfortunately, we don't have leverage against the platforms. We only have leverage against the host, and then, and it's hard to identify them and then go after them. And so we're looking for help with the web scrubber to get us the data we need to then take some action. So we can do administrative penalties. If they have a permit, then we can suspend their permit or revoke their permit. We can take action.
But it's the ones who don't have permits, or was it the ones whose permits are not on the platform?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Is the issue the host who do not have permits, or is the issue the host whose permit does not appear on the platform?
It's really both.
And we have no ability to compel either one, other than...
If we identify them, and when we have identified them, we've sent them letters requesting they come into compliance, but we haven't done anything beyond that.
And no administrative penalties?
We have not issued any to date.
Do we plan to?
Yes.
We just heard a long presentation on the housing shortage, and these short-term rentals are essentially taking rental units off the market and using them for short-term rentals. Why are we making our problem worse by allowing this for people who do not live at the site?
Right, so right now, out of the six hundred we believe are operating in the city, a hundred and fifty of them have complied and have a permit, and only twenty percent of those are not owner-operated, not at the site. But I suspect that other four hundred and fifty, the majority of those are out-of-town hosts.
And if they're out of town, it's going to be, the neighbors are going to have constant problems with being able to contact them and having some...
That's been a problem, and we've required on the permit that they have a property manager that's within thirty miles of the property with a phone number for neighbors to contact, but that's not as effective as the host being right there on the property.
Being on the site. I know you discussed it in law and ledge, but I would move that we take this back and revise it to require the host to live on-site if he wants to do a short-term rental.
So, do you mind, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Council member Carr, you know, it's a salient point. When we adopted this ordinance, again, we were trying to create opportunities, as we discussed it, largely for people to get extra income as one of the chief benefits, that they could rent out a home, rent out a room in their home and gather extra income, help them pay their mortgage. That was one of the biggest benefits. And you're exactly correct. You know, out-of-town operators have purchased some homes in the neighborhoods and turned them into de facto hotels. That was never our intent, I think, when we built this ordinance. I've pondered this question quite a bit and have felt that it might be a leverage point to get the platform operators to agree to putting permit numbers on their websites. I'm still undecided on this point. I mean, we could take it back to law and ledge, and I'd be happy, what I'd rather do is pass these, because in the short term, these changes to our ordinance will help us immediately in terms of enforcement of some bad operators that we have in town. I'd also like to say that the majority of the people are good operators, and even we have some off-site operators who are responsible and doing what they do very well, and it's helping them create income. It's doing the intended purpose. So I'm not inclined to go that stringent just yet, but I'd be happy to bring it back to law and ledge for further discussion about more amendments to the ordinance, if you're willing to go that route.
Well, if you think it's going to help you with some leverage with the platform operators, I'm willing to give it some time, but so far, it hasn't.
Well, we haven't really pushed very hard, but I'm in push mode now.
Then push harder.
Yeah, I will do. So, you know, if you're willing to give it that patience, then I'll ask for this ordinance to come back to law and ledge for another discussion about whether or not off-site operators are something we want to encourage. You're exactly right. If there are six hundred short-term rentals in the city, if even half of those are off-site operators, that is removing some inventory in the city for rental properties, and as we discussed earlier, we're in a critical situation, and actually, every unit makes a big difference. So really, in theory, I agree with you. I think that we, this is not quite the juncture to take that action.
If you're not ready for it, I would draw my motion, but I would appreciate taking it, having another discussion on it.
So I'll move the item with direction that we take another stab at this at law and ledge and have this discussion. So put it on the agenda for law and ledge for yet another discussion about how to make this ordinance more effective.
That is the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Continue the second. Okay, as amended, very good. Council member Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I think this is, there are some, probably with Jeff on this one, there's some good things in here and some things I have questions about. One question I had is, I did see that we were holding them accountable to their CCNRs. Are we also holding them accountable to HOA regulations? Is that part of it as well?
That's the intent as well. There were some concerns from homeowner associations that if someone received a permit from the city and they had a restriction that you could not do short-term rental, that we would supersede them, and we're making it clear in the code that that's not the case.
Right, it shouldn't be the case. We've been down this road with other things too, like backyard chickens was a very similar situation, where HOAs had a more restrictive rule than the city, and I just want to make sure that the HOAs are, have their input to this as well. So I have a lot of them in my district, and I want to make sure that that, that they're included in the discussion.
Okay, we did not reach out to them.
Okay. Perhaps in the next go-round, Jeff...
Let's put it on the list.
You could add that to the list of things for law and ledge, to just talk to some of the HOA leadership. They're all elected, so it's pretty easy to find them and just hear from them what concerns they're having. The second question I had for this, I think what you're doing with the, in general with the permit and the platforms is really useful. We need to probably push it a little bit harder. I'm going to guess, just looking at Carl, it probably needs resources for that, and I would recommend that we do that, that we give the resources to it that we need. But I worry a little bit about this prohibiting advertising for more than six guests, because a lot of times, people get a house intentionally, a large one with a lot of rooms, because they want to bring their whole family there. And I understand what we're trying to do probably is prevent party situations, but if Sacramento is a destination city, which it is for some instances, there might be folks, there are certainly homes in my district that are large enough to host more than six people, and I just want to be careful that we don't create a rule so restrictive that it feels like we're only looking at certain neighborhoods with certain size homes. Sacramento's big and diverse. Perhaps the rule could be something more like you don't advertise for more than six people unless you have five or more bedrooms in the home, or something like that where it's very clear that it could accommodate more than six people. I, there are several, I'm sure we all know families that have, are larger than six people. So if you had a seven-person family, could you not use Airbnb in our city? Because that's probably a bit of a problem, right? So I just think it feels arbitrary to me. That number six probably ought to be a number linked to the size of the house.
So if I could address that? Yeah, when the ordinance first was adopted, there was a maximum of six, and then this discussion did come up, and there was, there's an option to go through a conditional use permit process, in which case, that limitation would be whatever that permit said. So it could be twelve, it could be...
I vaguely recall that conditional use permit, but it just makes more sense that the standing ordinance would be less arbitrary and more linked to the size of the home, right? Because a person who wants to come stay downtown in a studio for the weekend is probably not seeking the same type of environment as a family of ten that wants to stay on the lake in Natomas for a weekend with their family, and limiting them to six basically just eliminates Sacramento from their option. So, I don't know, I mean, I think we have a lot of competing things here to think about, so I'm, I will vote to support this tonight because I think it's progress, but I think it's an intermediary step, and there probably needs to be some more discussion, whether it's at law and ledge or council, whatever, that, where we really think about the variety of ways that people use Airbnb, and a lot of people that use Airbnb use it because they're trying to find something outside of the normal experience of a hotel room, right? So I think that's important for us to consider, so that Sacramento can compete on that market, because we are short houses, we're also short hotel rooms, and this is one way for us to increase that inventory as well, which we've also been asked to do by several entities. So I think, you know, competing issues here. But good work from you, great intermediary step, and I never want to miss a chance to thank Carl, because he's a super city of Sacramento employee, works really hard. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on this dialogue, because I think council member Ashby hit that balance point pretty well. The tension between homes that are being used for people coming to visit the city, and a lot of them are probably closer into the core, although some of them may be further out. We have had significant challenges with Airbnbs, or, sorry, short-term rentals, not necessarily Airbnb, where people do throw parties that come in from out of town, and it becomes very problematic. How we balance that out to council member Carr's point, I think, is hard to know without creating a challenge on the other side, but I do think that when we hit a certain threshold of short-term rental units, and Brad, where are we right now with the number of units versus those permitted? And, you know, I know that we have official ones, but there are also still unofficial ones.
Yeah, we have a hundred and fifty-eight permits issued, and we believe there are six hundred people conducting short-term rentals in Sacramento.
And those six hundred, how we get there is going to be a really important thing, to give the community confidence that they're properly regulated. How many of those are in homes that aren't a primary residence? Or are...
We don't know. All I can speak to is the hundred and fifty-eight that are permitted. Eighty percent of them are owner-occupied hosts, so they're on-site.
How do we verify that they're owner-occupied?
Well, okay, they submit that in their application, and...
An attestation under penalty of perjury, or just they check a box and it's never followed up? Because there are people who own multiple homes within the city, and they may say it's their primary residence, but they don't actually live there.
Right, they check a box.
So I think that would be one of the things to follow up, because Mr. Carr is absolutely right. If we reach a tipping point where there's, I don't know what the right number is, we'd probably have to think about it, but six hundred doesn't seem like a lot for the whole city, but if it was a thousand, but maybe there's a tipping point where we want to make sure that that housing remains available for rental for the community to live in, and work through that later through law and ledge. But I do think that there's a lot of merit in this debate, but we don't want to shut down this sharing economy aspect of our community, because people do benefit who are local and who are trying to either pay their mortgage or provide, I know people who do it because they want to help pay their college tuition for their kids. So I think there is that balance, so I'll support the ordinance.
You're still getting the balance, and all you're saying is you must live in the house. And the whole issue that council member Ashby brings up doesn't matter. If you're living in a house, it doesn't matter how many people you can bring in, because you're there to supervise. All the issues that we are facing are coming from the owner not being in the house.
I agree with that, and, sorry, Mr. I agree with that. I think that maybe one of the things we think about when we come back to law and ledge is how to tighten up the verification that it is a primary residence.
Put it on the list.
Thank you. Council member Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I have a little different take, you know, council member Carr. I think, having lived around Sac State and watched how some of those homes before short-term rentals became, you know, places where students would rent the whole house, and sometimes a parent would buy the house for their child to rent out, and they were the owner living there at the house. And I even see that, you know, on some of the short-term rental sites, there's a couple of those still up for rental, and I'll tell you, you know, anytime you get six more people on that, it becomes a party, and I've heard of about folks up in East Sacramento that, you know, that have done it, they've done it in my district too, and so sometimes what, you know, you hope that every homeowner has a little pride in homeownership and would allow, would hope that people would maintain their civility around a neighborhood, but it's not always the case. So, I mean, I like this idea, I support council member Harris's motion here, and let's give it a shot, but I wouldn't assume that just because the homeowner's there, it's always going to be a great homeowner, you know? And I think, given that, this time, I'd even say, rather than bringing it immediately back to law and ledge, I'd be open to just say, hey, let's give it a year's effort and take a look at it, but if it's council member Harris, you're fine to just keep it on the log and talk about what we do to leverage. I'm fine with that, but I would be worried about increasing that size until we get a better feel of how things are going.
I agree.
Councilman Shneur.
I'm going to agree with my member to my left, in all circumstances.
He's a gentleman.
Absolutely. So, look, we've walked a fine line on this, trying to balance the needs of the neighborhoods with a burgeoning cottage industry, and I think we've whiplashed Brad here. So my feeling, I'm going to support the motion, I think it's the right thing to do. Again, we're trying to find that balance. We do need hotel rooms or rooms, that's a piece of the puzzle here, so that's the other side of it, which really is important to our economy in Sacramento. We don't have enough hotel rooms. So I'm going to call a question on this, and let's go ahead and vote, and let it settle in a little bit, let's see what we can do, and if we need to bring it back, if we have problems, we'll continue to work on it. But I think Mr. Gure is right, let's give it a little bit of time to settle.
We do have one speaker, Mr. Worthy, I want to give Jeff Harris, councilman Harris, the last word here from the dais. Councilman Harris?
Okay, great. So, you know, when we first built this ordinance, we deliberated quite a bit about how many people we would allow in short-term rentals. We started at four, and I believe it was actually council member Ashby who got us to increase it to six. Empirically speaking, the problems that we've had, the complaints that we've had, have been in houses where there were six or more people in the home overnight, devolved into a party, went past hours, exceeded the noise ordinance, and became real nuisances. So, like Jay said, we're trying to strike a balance here every time this comes to council, and I'm a little aggrieved it comes so often, but it's a very new industry, and we really don't quite have the toolset to be able to enforce, but we're moving in that direction and moving pretty stridently, so let's vote on it.
Okay, Mr. Worthy. Then we're going to vote. Then we're going to vote.
On this item, we only had, I think, two people come in since it was in place and complained about some noise. But when, am I complaining about cars? Now, past couple of years, and I took my idea to an intelligence agency that's retired, I'm concerned of who in my neighborhood for a few hours or a few days. I'm concerned these people talk about traffic, bumper to bumper. Now, how these cars stay on some streets in Oak Park all day and all night? Where'd they go to work? Now, one of the intelligence sources told me, said, Mac, those are people that's trafficking drugs, are sex trafficking. You don't see nobody catching light, uh, bus or light rail. So where are they? Situation people, I said, keep your eyes open. I can only report what I see. I'll brief it here, and I only give you skepticism here. But detail, I would prefer to deal with the FBI agent, because we got some serious thing going on here in Sacramento. Children and drug trafficking. Now, we have an increase in people that use drugs in Oak Park, and they're not black. But we got less patrol than we had in many, many years. Bicycles, be aware of who on a bike, three o'clock in the morning. Open your eyes, people. Ride around your neighborhood that you don't live in and see what's going on. So wake up, I'm going to stay on it, I'm going to start taking license plate numbers. Because we ran a license plate number that was a rental car. So the biggest drugs move through Southern California to San Francisco was in a rental car. Was in the airport in San Francisco. So these are the things that you got to keep your eyes open when you got strangers coming in, when you got, we don't have no documentation on who rented that property. Where is the documentation? Where is the identification of the people? The hotel will give it to you.
Mr. Worthy.
Thank you. The question has been called, um, the motion's been made as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes nine to nothing. All right, very good. Uh, that is the formal council agenda. We now have public testimony for items not on the agenda. We have how many people?
I have thirteen speakers.
Thirteen speakers, okay. Let's begin.
First one, Elizabeth McDaniel's, Naomi Monte, then Patrick Bankert, then James Fago Clark. Ms. McDaniel?
Well, good evening. So, this morning, I was given an illegal lockout in my apartment. Hmm, um, so-called sheriff person came, I asked him for a card, he didn't even have a card to give me. He didn't even, he told me the reason why he didn't come on the thirteenth, meaning Monday, was because he was off work. And, um, you know, so he was resting, so he couldn't come and do it. Um, the eviction is illegal, uh, the lockout is illegal, and basically, isn't it bad enough that my furniture was stole and replaced with, um, garbage look-alike furniture? And now you're attempting to destroy the evidence? Before I can even get off the property good, oh my God, it was such a host of trucks from Reliant Property Management to come and remove my items, and I told them they better not touch anything because it's illegal. What has transpired? Um, the air out of, three of my tires were low, and then one of them was flat, so I couldn't even hardly get off of the property, okay? And, um, I'll say this, case in point, God is using me, whether you believe it or not, to expose the systematic networking assault against the residents of Sacramento State of California to make folks homeless. Newsflash, I'm already homeless. This is not my, my ultimate goal. My ultimate goal is heaven. Beginning with point in Natomas Apartments ran by Reliant Property Management. So please take heed to the spoken word. What does it profit a man to gain the whole world and lose his soul? The, the word of God also says, it is written, "The love of money is the root of all evil." And it is definitely written that "Every knee shall bow and every tongue shall confess that Jesus Christ is Lord," to the glory of God. I got peace today.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Naomi Monte.
I bless you.
Patrick Bankert, and then James Fago Clark.
Hello, everyone. My name is Naomi Monte. I am the young lady last year that caught that video about the officer, um, beating a friend of mine a jaywalking ticket. And I'm back today, just to say, I want to thank this officer. I want to thank that officer back there, because I've been in darkness since that had happened, and nobody came to me and said, hey, how you doing? Is you okay? But since I came here today, Mr. Mayor, that officer, and that officer took me a little bit up out of my darkness, it's because the few words that they gave me.
They're good people.
Yeah, they are. Those two that I have met today. And I also want to say, I just thank Allen Warren and this gentleman here for also giving me a few words of encouragement, because if you know like I know, I needed it, and it's been a long time coming. It took me a year to come back here, just to say what I've been through, what I've been going through. When I walk in my house, I walk into darkness, because when that situation happened, that's where it had took me. So I'm asking one more time, when I asked the first time when I was here, and nobody came to my rescue, not even a phone call, and said, hey, Naomi, how you doing? I asked for counseling, and nobody came to my rescue. I know this is a full panel, and I know you guys are busy, but hey, how am I doing?
Naomi.
I could be doing better.
Hi, Mayor, your time's up, but I want to ask you now, what, what can we do to help you?
Counseling.
Counseling? So you, you want to, you want to see if we can find you a counselor, a therapist?
Somebody that can pretty much, um, relate to me, and if I can speak.
Okay.
That officer and just ask him why.
Okay, we...
And that would help me.
I'll tell you what, if, if we can have a member of our staff talk to you for a moment so we can kind of hone down a little bit, who, who might be helpful for you to talk to? Maybe we can make a, a phone call or two and see if we can find somebody for you to talk to, um, that, that would provide some comfort and, and some answers. No guarantees, but of course, we're willing to try.
Chief Paletta's in the back.
Chief Paletta.
He's right in the back here.
Chief Paletta is, uh, the, the, the chief who will come on in here. If you can go right back there and go talk to Chief Paletta for a minute, we'll try to figure out if we can help you, okay?
Thank you.
God bless. Take care, okay? Next.
Next speaker is Patrick Bankert, James Fago Clark, Ms. Chris Rogers.
Bankert, hi.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. I'm coming to you today because I would like to request the City Council to adopt a new resolution to ban space-based weapons. This would allow victims of electromagnetic warfare, like me, to file police reports and to see physicians at the hospital without police or doctors assuming victims are not of sound mind. And it's called electromagnetics weapons, space-based weapons, in Congress bill H R two nine seven seven. Space-based weapons include electromagnetic weapons. Electromagnetic weapons are mind-controlled technologies which use electromagnetic waves to hijack a person's brain and nervous system and subvert an individual's sense of control over their own thinking, behavior, emotions, and decision-making. Electromagnetic weapons use the same electronic basis as radar, long-distance telephone calls, or television. These weapons aim to control or alter the psyche to attack the various sensory and data processing systems of a person through microwave radiation, brain-computer interfaces, and satellites which beam extremely low frequencies at an individual. The human body is essentially an electrochemical system, and devices that disrupt the electrical impulses of the nervous system can affect behavior and body functions. Berkeley passed Resolution six one seven four four to permanently ban weaponization of space. Richmond passed Resolution five one fifteen supporting the Congress bill H R two nine seven seven, ensuring that individuals will not be targets of space-based weapons. Sacramento men, women, and children all deserve to be safe from the horror and victimization that electromagnetic, magnetic weapons can bring. And do we not deserve the freedom to know our thoughts, behaviors, and dreams are authentically ours? The word is out, control of a person's mind and behavior is a capability of the military. This means if these weapons are allowed to be used, that is the end of freedom as we know it. I found a, a court case, oh, I ran out of time.
Do you have something you want to submit in writing?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you submit it to the clerk? We'll read the rest of it. And we thank you for your testimony.
I'm asking for your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll look at it.
My next speaker was James Fago Clark, but I don't see Mr. Clark. And Ms. Chris Rogers, is Ms. Rogers here? Calling Ms. Rogers is Eric Windheim, and then Gary Perrier.
Good evening.
Face app, the other...
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've heard you say that citizens of Sacramento need to see how our tax dollars are being spent before we can consider voting on raising taxes once again. And I agree. Regarding homeless services, I need to see more. Right now, the city is spending over sixty-five, over sixty-five million dollars on whole-person care, which only provides navigation to other services. This passive approach, sitting in buildings and waiting for a person in need to show up, isn't enough. We need a professional proactive outreach team to go out and meet people where they are. Tonight, I brought you an example of what a proactive outreach team looks like. The City of San Jose contracts with HomeFirst for outreach services. They pay seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the service, and this is the type of action the money funds. Eight full-time staff who work five days a week, forty hours each, uh, up to nineteen homeless encampment visits a day. The city provides the encampment visit requests, and it's based on calls from citizens. Outreach professionals are ready to provide a V I S P D A T for anyone willing to take the test. Test results can verify the level of need and how quickly a person should receive services. There are five outreach vehicles. When able, the team uses these vehicles to take people to shelter, hospitals, and appointments. The outreach team helps with case management. They work to ensure these folks are not lost in a minutia of forms and requirements that confuse and frustrate them. The outreach teams spend time with individuals and learn their personal stories. They build trust by returning, bringing toiletries, food, and support. It can take months for someone to accept help, and this outreach team works to keep folks from falling through the cracks. We don't have this in our city right now. Out of over sixty-four million dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand a year is a small amount to ensure the people you are trying to support are being reached out to on a regular basis. I've left the clerk the contact name of the CEO of HomeFirst. She welcomes the call and is happy to offer any advice in implementing such a program in our city. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers, first of all, thank you for coming forward, thank you for a constructive suggestion. Um, I've talked to the city manager, we're going to agendize in the next few weeks a report back on whole-person care, because I do think there is some misunderstanding. Whole-person care is partnering with a number of outreach efforts similar to HomeFirst, and we could learn from HomeFirst, I'm sure, but want to have that discussion so that you and the public know exactly what it encompasses, and the numbers of people that we've actually gotten off the streets. We've gotten over four hundred people off the street through whole-person care already since, and it's only the beginning. But you make some good suggestions, you make some very good suggestions about what it's going to take around assertive and intensive outreach out on the street. So let's have that discussion in the next few weeks when we talk about, uh, the progress of whole-person care, okay? And then you come back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, all right?
Next speaker is Eric Windheim, Gary Perrier, Cynthia Kay. I don't see, Eric, I don't see Gary, Cynthia Kay.
Who is that?
Gary. So following Gary, Cynthia Kay, Alexander Clark, and then Juve Spooner.
My name is Gary Perrier, and I'm with Sacramento County Representative, For God We Trust America, under the leadership and vision of founder Jackie Sullivan, longtime City Councilmember in Bakersfield. And our mission is to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials to vote yes to legally display our congressionally-approved national motto in God We Trust in every city, council chamber, and state capital in America. On July thirtieth, nineteen fifty-six, Dwight D. Eisenhower's administration, the U.S. Congress adopted In God We Trust as the official national motto of the United States of America. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties across America who are promoting patriotism by voting yes, to proudly and prominently display our national motto, In God We Trust, in the chambers where the people's business is conducted. To encourage this trend across America, a nonprofit organization with 501(c) status was created and named In God We Trust America. Displaying our national motto is a legal right protected by the First Amendment. There have been no legal challenges because there's nothing to challenge. We are pleased to announce that there are currently over seven hundred municipalities across America displaying In God We Trust in their chambers. Can you please put this on the agenda for a vote? There's one hundred and thirty-four cities and counties in California displaying this in their chambers. If you vote yes, you would be the first in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, sir.
Questions?
Thank you so much, we'll take it under consideration. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cynthia Kay, Alexander Clark, and then Juve Spooner. I think Mr. Clark is left.
He's here. Mr. Clark is here.
Okay, one system that is working is She-Ra. They have been instrumental in helping me cut through a lot of red tape. I still don't have housing. The city needs to make more of an effort to get the information out. I share it, I go out on the street and share it with them. People don't know where to go, they don't know who to ask. I ran into a gentleman, fifty-two, and first time he had ever been homeless, he didn't have a clue where to go. Not one clue where to go. People that are out there need direction. You need to give them direction of who they can call, what is available. There are a lot of services that, that are out there that are useless. People on the street know that. They don't go to them. They share that information because those services aren't helping at all. But She-Ra is working very hard to get information out and to help anybody, any age, find some place. I'm hoping that within a week or two, I will have a place. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, and the best to you.
My next speaker is Alexander Clark, Juve Spooner, and Michael Voy.
Last time I was here, I remember Steinberg. You are the original one who, who banned me from city council speaking. And my thing is, I really don't too much understand why. You as a mayor, you know what I'm saying, think out of all people that you have a right to silence people's voices. When any injustice situation have happened to anybody, family member, who have been victim of, uh, victims of police brutality. It seemed like you more so want somebody kissing your ass than criticizing you for the wrong stuff that you do. Here you have an old woman who sit here and complains to you about these programs that you sit here and consistently tell people that work that have not at all been effective. You know what I'm saying? So I feel like honestly, it's time for you to own up to your bullshit.
Sure.
I feel like it's time for, okay, I'm going to say it like this, I feel like it's time for, I, I feel like it's time for every city council member to take responsibility for something. Because like I tell you before, I won't be silent, and I'm not going nowhere. So you can get over that. You want to deal with Mr. Alexander, Alexander DeJuan Prince Clark all the time I'm here in fucking Sacramento as a resident.
Please, sir.
And you want to deal with my family. Because at the end of the day, it's about Stefan Clark, it's about Brandon Smith. It's about the people who are continuing being killed by police officers are not being held accountable. That's bullshit. And for you to sit there and talk about that you're giving these people fair chances and everything else to find proper homes, where? There's homeless people that you sat there to kick off this goddamn property. They have nowhere to go. You want to sit there and sit your police officers on homeless people? Three o'clock, two o'clock in the morning? Three o'clock, twelve o'clock in the morning, waking them up off that goddamn sleep with guns drawn. How constitutional is that? All because you! Well, let's talk about four hundred thousand dollars that was stolen.
Mr. Clark, your time is complete.
Wait a minute, let me finish what I goddamn got to say.
Your time is complete.
What about the four hundred thousand dollars, Steinberg, that was stolen from the project that you was a part of? All the money that was missing?
Mr. Clark, would you please have a seat?
Thank you, Mr. Clark, your time is up.
You can't ask that question, can you?
Mr. Clark.
You have stolen from everybody here in Sacramento, and you have lied to these people.
Your time is up, sir.
You have lied to these people. And I damn well sit there and try to switch Stefan Clark, Brandon Smith, getting choked on the goddamn road. You talk about regulations? Hey, come on, man. Regulate justice. Or you talk about regulating anything.
Mr. Clark, your time is complete.
What do you think police officers are going to do? Hire more police officers?
Sir, I'm going to give you fifteen seconds.
You a mayor, have you done a goddamn thing about it?
Okay, I need you to leave now. I need, I need, I need you to leave.
It's time for these people hire somebody else, America. It's time for you all to go. Your time is coming. Fuck you mean, Volley or Black Panther Party? Fucking clown. Fuck all of you. Y'all want to sit here and lie to these people?
Mr. Clark.
And fuck you. Remember, you banned me, right?
My next speaker is Juve Spooner, then Michael Voy, then McWorthy. Mr. Spooner?
Banned me, remember that shit? Stefan Clark, Brandon Smith, I believe, I'm...
Good afternoon, city councilor and mayor. Pass, and I want to say to my best friend, my brother, once again, Happy birthday, brother, Stefan, I love you, brother. There's a saying, my last name is Spooner for a reason, it's a family name. And the way I was raised is, you disrespect somebody, that's not cool, especially on live television. And what I'm talking about is for the past two weeks, District Five has sat and disrespected an OG behind me and disrespected my best friend's daughter while she broke down, and that ain't cool. You said the F-bomb to OG behind me, and guess what? My nieces, my nephew saw that. And you're supposed to be setting an example? There's a saying, you want to be an example, you show it. You don't say F-bombs to people who've been here before you, people that's been here before me, people that's paved the way for us to be here, people that's made sacrifices for us to be here today, and has been through stuff to get where we're at. Because there was a member before I was born, you would never have a black person and white in the same building. Look around us today, Asians wouldn't even be allowed to be in the same building as us. All I'm saying is to be respectful in that way and stop being disrespectful. Because whether you know it or not, these cameras are still warning. So when you said that F-bomb last week, oh, yes, it's still on the internet right now. And in four days, it would be five months since the last time I seen my friend. I got one question for the chief behind me in that room. When did you start to get whitewashed and actually quit doing the job?
Mr. Spooner, your time is complete.
Your time is up, please.
Can I comment?
Thank you, Mr. Spooner.
Oh, Juve, no. Don't come in here and do that. You and I have talked, you and I have talked about this. Do not do that, or else I'm going to ask you to leave. Show some respect, please. Please don't use profanity in this chamber. Next...
Our next speaker is Michael Voy, McWorthy, then David Andre, and then Tommy Whitlow.
Voy?
Evening, Mayor, council members. The first thing I need to do is make a correction to my testimony from last week. I referred to, I was referring to Elijah Moore and Enrique Rios, the two youngsters, the sixteen- and seventeen-year-old, one Hispanic, one African-American, that were murdered over, and pay back over three ounces of marijuana. I've referred to that as being in Sacramento County. Actually, it's in Yolo County, and the case is moving forward in Woodland. So with that one correction, the rest of the testimony is accurate. Then, one thing, I was at the Housing Workshop, and one of the things that occurs to me, if you were, if the city really takes any part of that having skin in the game sort of thing, you can leverage some, your number-one assets. You got, what, a thousand lots or something, somewhere around? Well, if you made those lots available to developers on a partnership basis for a lease option, there's no cash involved, but there's collateral for the developer to use, and then you could have the share on the sale or whatever after the fact, which you could use the value in the lot to get it developed, since there's been talk about that kind of concern. How do we get these lots developed? What incentives? Well, make it available under a lease purchase. You can share in the profits on the sale. The only other thing that I would say is that I hope that this, the Stefan Clark investigation, I hope that's moving along, because it's taking a long time, and I have some concerns about the time that it's taking for that. That's all I have for this evening. I'll leave this, this, if you read this article about...
Your time is complete, Mr. Voy, thank you. Our next speaker is McWorthy, David Andre, and the final speaker is Tommy Whitlow. Mr. Worthy?
People, if this a hearing, we want to know, we're going to know why this a hearing soon. This is the documentation where I want to lay that out in court, that what come to me, I'm going to show you through the mail. Second time he come, I decide to bring it here. I decide to bring it here. Because from what was said to me the last time this meeting, there's some evidence here. That came to me, the second letter, came to me. Something ain't here, ain't right. If that's not ethics violation, what is ethics violation? I only made one step on it today, and I'm going to wait till those people get back to me, because in one of those letters was the FBI agent in Rosario's phone number. Ain't everybody lying? If you're going to move trash, I can help you move trash out of here. Because somebody going to tell me how this come to me in two letters. Because the wife said, well, suppose Southern White come? I can take care of my people. These are the things that somebody want to put on the internet, going to put it on the internet, but I'm going to get to the bottom of it. And there, you should look at some ethics violations. When Jason, J and N told me to go fuck myself the last meeting, this was when I brought here. Some of this here is evident. Assistant there said right over there, let me go fuck myself. And you're going to tell the kid, if that type of language can be used by city council, the language of these boys can be used, something wrong with you there. So wake up. I'm going to go all the way with it?
Well, wake up, thank you.
Because I want to get somebody under oath.
Next. Wake up. Next.
Our next speaker is David Andre, and the final speaker is Tommy Whitlow.
Good evening. In these very trying times, when we have homeless people dying on the streets, and you have the cooling centers shut down, it looks to me, and a lot of people, that an inordinate amount of money is being spent on police suppression of the anti-Ice protesters. This would put Sacramento in league with the Trump administration, that our city money is actually going to suppress a protest against the very thing that city council has come out against. Seems like we'd be on the same side here. It looks like a whole lot of money, and I hope you guys, some of you, will use your office to look at exactly how much local taxpayer money is being used on this, when we have so much poverty and so much death on our streets. Thank you.
You.
And our final speaker is Tommy Whitlow.
Whitlow, welcome to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Tommy Whitlow, and I'm with the Sacramento Valley Section of the National Council of Negro Women, and I'm here to, I will be back next Tuesday, but tonight, I'm here to request that when there is a change in how nonprofits use facilities, we need to be advised. I was advised about a change in the accounting department of how you disperse funds and what nonprofits need to do. There was a change in how you use facilities. We have a Christian Women, Children of Promise Conference every year at the Samuel and Bunny Pennell Community Center. We have never paid a thousand sixty-five dollars for the use of the facility. We use, we get a discount, and the facility becomes one of the underwriters of the conference. They could not give me that discount this year, because the city made, the city council members made a change, or implemented something in the city document. So I'm only asking that you would let nonprofits know when there is a change in how we pay to use your facilities.
Request the city manager to look into that, if there is such a notification policy, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, can we, we get, and we'll get back to Ms. Whitlow. Okay, good suggestion.
Thank you.
Sorry for the inconvenience. We'll look into that and rectify it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitlow has been a staunch member of the community. She does work for both the seniors as well as a group of other folks. So I want to thank you for all the work that you do. The city manager is going to work this out, and I really apologize for your having to sit through what you've had to sit through to come up here.
And Ms...
Well, Ms. Whitlow is a constituent of mine as well, and I appreciate you coming out here today, too, and Ms. Kennedy, Fake Kennedy also brought up this issue, and we...
Same issue.
I think it's an important thing that we figure out how to assist the nonprofits who are trying to help out, so.
This is part, I think, of building a broader neighborhood movement, too, where there's those connections, right, all the time between the city, not just the council member and the council member's office, but the city and all of the great nonprofits and others that are doing work out there, we...
And I'm sure Councilmember Carr and I can help bird dog this issue for you, too, as well.
Mayor, I believe this is linked to the same policy that we discussed a few months back, where the school district was also being asked to pay to rent parks' facility fees. So you might remember, we took action at that point, and we carved out a couple of exemptions.
We did, I do remember that.
And there's an item, coming back to council, that allows for the department director to exempt nonprofits.
Exempt nonprofits?
That either in next week's meeting and the week after. Yeah, I just saw it on the preliminary agendas.
Probably in the interim, Ms. Whitlow could seek the assistance of either Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Gere, to circumvent that situation.
Okay.
Assistant, Chris Conlon.
Yeah, he's in the back.
Mr. Conlon is taking notes.
He's going to catch her on the way out.
Okay. Mr. Conlon is, is, is right, right back there. Okay, we're going to get on this. Okay, thank you. We, time for council ideas and questions. We do have a closed session. Okay, let's do council ideas and questions, and then we can recess into closed session briefly, okay? Council ideas and questions, if there's nothing else to come before... I've got Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Want to make sure that constituents in District Seven know that we have Pocket Greenhaven office hours tomorrow, at the Robbie Waters Library, I'm sorry, it's on the sixteenth, Thursday the sixteenth, at 6:00 p.m. We encourage you to come out. That way, you don't have to come all the way down here to City Hall in order to let all your issues be known. We'll be out there in the community, ready to deal with any issues that you have or opportunities. And then on Friday the seventeenth, we've got three things happening, all at the same park, Garcha Bend Park. From five to eight, we'll have trucks and such, some of the finest food in all of Sacramento, variety of food, trucks, that you're just going to love, and just delicious food. And then at seven o'clock, for all kids that are getting ready to go back to school, for the first one hundred kids that are in need of a backpack, backpack and supplies, the District Seven is partnering with an organization called Outside the Walls, and we'll be partnering with them to give a hundred backpacks for the first kids that come with their parents in order to make sure that there is a need and that we can get them to the right kids. That'll take place from seven o'clock into eight o'clock, until all the backpacks are given out, and then at dusk, we have the movie in the park, so this will conclude the evening, and the movie will be Coco, a thrilling story about the ancestral culture and music, and it's a must-see if you haven't had the opportunity to see it. And when you come out to see it, and you're sitting under the stars, on your blanket or in your chair, we'll make sure to provide all the snacks and beverages for you, so you have a truly wonderful experience with the food, the backpacks, and the movie, all on Friday the eight, seventeenth.
Super, that sounds great. Councilman Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jennings, Coco is a beautiful film. We showed it at the park two weeks ago, and it was well-received. Four brief announcements, and then I have a request of the city manager. River Park Neighborhood Association meets this Thursday, 8:16, 7:30 at Fremont Presbyterian Church, Room E210. Mulch Mania is this Saturday. It's at Gardenland Park, which is really rapidly becoming a thing of beauty. It's at 310 Bowman Avenue in the North Gate neighborhood. This is put on by the Sacramento Tree Foundation. It's part of our Natomas Urban Greening Program. So as well as planting trees, we're working at keeping them alive, which is the other piece of the puzzle. Glen Hall Park Cleanup is the Saturday, next Saturday, actually, August 25th, from nine till noon. We'll bring the tools and refreshments, and we just ask that you bring a hat and a smile. I've been leading this group for eight years, and I'm hoping this is my last iteration. I think I may have found somebody to take it over from me. If not, I'll carry through to the end of the year. Screen on the Green is also next Saturday, 8:25 at Glen Hall Park, 5415 Sandberg Drive, where we will be showing the newest iteration of Jumanji. It's a pretty fun movie. Begins at sundown, about 8:15, and there, of course, will be free popcorn. Mr. City Manager, I have a request from you, and I've talked to our active transportation specialist, Jennifer Donlin Wyant, about this. She has an idea for what she calls a charm campaign to help manage the behavior on our Class One bikeways in the American River Parkway, based on what they've done in the Atlanta Beltway, which has been very successful in getting cyclists to actually obey the speed limit and get there. Any other unlawful behaviors, don't take it personally now. But, but, but this is a real concern to me. You know, I'm working hard to get the Two Rivers Trail project moving forward, and a very common complaint I get, especially around, you know, residential neighborhoods, is about speeding cyclists on our multi-modal trails. So this is like a mini Vision Zero, if you will. We have had bike and pedestrian fatalities on the American River Parkway. It's a serious issue, but you know, if we're going to get our vision, our grand vision for connectivity on our sides of the river, we're really going to have to pay attention to this issue. So if you could have Ms. Donlin Wyant come back with a proposal for the charm campaign, that'd be very appreciative. Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite everybody out this Saturday for our movie night. It's going to be at Pollock Ranch Park, 3800 Robin Ridge Way in Sacramento. We're showing Black Panther. So for those who haven't seen it, or those who want to see it again, that's going to start at dusk at Pollock Ranch Park, 3800 Robin Ridge Way. And then on Sunday, bring your blanket, bring your chairs, and enjoy a free concert in the park. There will be food trucks, community resources, and activities available for all ages, including a jump house and a rock wall. The District Eight Meadowview Park Day will be this Sunday, the nineteenth, and will be featuring, drum roll, please, drum roll, featuring Roger Smith and Friends. Roger Smith is with Tower Power.
Oh, you're kidding me.
And they're really an excellent group. So that's going to be Sunday, starting at 5:30 at Meadowview Park, 7760 24th Street. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, I may go to that. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a quick AB 1234 report over the last, well, I wasn't here last week, and I told you that, but I was participating in the American Leadership Forum and Wilderness Experience, where we were off the grid, no cell phone, no email, forced to hike five miles, then up a mountain and back down, and another five miles, almost total of twenty. And with a lot of other regional leaders, it was an amazing experience, and I got back this afternoon, but for those of you who've done it, you know all about that. For those of you who will do it, I look forward to seeing your reactions when you come back. For those of you who will do it, I look forward to seeing your reactions when you come back.
Thank you. Councilman Gera, welcome back safely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one, a couple of announcements. Tahoe Park Food Truck and Movie Night is gonna be on Friday, August 24th. So bring your lawn chairs out and get ready for a little fun. And then also, with the Carcass Art Museum, we're gonna have a District 6 Pop-Up Resource Fair, August 25th, from 12:00 to 4:00, in front of the Fruit Ridge Shopping Center on Stockton Boulevard. And one last request for the city manager, and that's, this is a follow-up from the Project Prosper and some of the, the things we discussed there. One of the, the items was to create a cross-discipline team to target the commercial corridors, and I'm asking that the, that the city manager come back with the staff to develop a community and neighborhood economic development planning team that's a cross-discipline team to try to tackle the challenges on our commercial corridors.
Great idea. Very important. All right. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, thank you for your productive day and meeting. We are adjourned. Oh, that's what I meant.